I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag.
United States.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Carmas present.
Thank you. Would legal counsel like to inform us?
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to ask that the record would reflect that pursuant to section six, ten point zero one five of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in the chambers can still participate and vote remotely on all matters since an emergency exists and we are currently in the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And do we need to make a motion to excuse counsel person? Or?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any changes, revisions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Kathleen Foley, Ennis of Foley's Bar and Grill located at thirty-five twenty-two Greenwood for a Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that has raised their hand to speak regarding this request?
Yeah, we have a hand up from Janine. I'll bring Janine in. Janine, can you, can you hear us okay?
I think she's muted.
I asked, can I ask her to unmute, Janine? Can you hear us?
There we go.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi. My name is Janine Beck. I am the Director of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce and we are just here tonight to lend our full support to Katie and Foley's in getting their Sunday liquor license. They're one of the oldest restaurants in Maplewood and have big contributors to the community and I know that they've gone through all the proper steps and I would just ask for that you consider it and approve it this evening. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. If not, the public hearing is for Foley's is closed. The next item, number seven, is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Young, Ji, Liu. I hope I got that right, of Blue Crab Juicy Seafood located at thirty-two forty-eight Le Cleed Station Road for a full and Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that's, has their hand up for that one?
Mayor Greenberg, I do not show any hands.
Okay, in that case, the public hearing with regards to Blue Crab is now closed. Item number eight is a public forum. Do we have participants with raised hands for the public forum?
If you'd like to speak at the public forum, you can use the raise hand function. I do not see any more.
Okay. Item number nine is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Well, I do have some. There's a lot going on around here right now. I wanted to mention that the SOL Food Farmers Market, the season begins April twenty-eighth and it runs through October, but the market is moving to twenty-eight oh eight Sutton Boulevard, the living room parking lot there. So I thought that was really good and close. So that's Wednesdays from three-thirty to six-thirty. And another thing is the city website redesign began this week and will be continuing for at least the next four months. So that's an estimate, I'm sure, but so that's in the works. A new resident packet is now available on the city website and some of us have checked it out already and it's really a lot of really great information, whether you're new or whether you're not, all kinds of good information on that. The other couple of events in May are String Fest, which is Friday, May fourteenth from six to nine, and Taste of Maplewood, which is May fourteenth also from six to nine, and also Saturday from noon to eight. So those two events are in May and then the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center, the passes are now on sale at the Heights Community Center. They'll be available later at the pool, once the pool is open, but you can go ahead and get them now at the Heights. And I think that's all I've got for now.
Are there any other announcements? In that case, item number ten is the approval of the March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any changes, modifications? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The council meeting minutes have been approved. Item number eleven is a motion to approve a Sunday liquor license for Kathleen Foley, Ennis of Foley's Bar and Grill located at thirty-five twenty-two Greenwood.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. How many of these liquor licenses do we have left?
I don't have that answer now, but I can track it down and email it. It's, we definitely have enough. I just don't know how many left we have. I haven't, I haven't looked at that actual number, but I can go ahead and do that and I can email that out.
Is a Sunday license calculated just as a regular one? Or is it just?
So, and Foley's already has a liquor.
Right.
It's an, it's an exception. I mean, it's, it's an addition to what they currently have, so it wouldn't count against a new number, but I do know we have a few left over. We amended that ordinance, if I had to guess, probably four years ago, maybe five years ago. So it's not going to count against, it's not going to be an addition, but we do have additional ones left over.
Okay. Are there any other questions with regards to this motion? In that case, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item number twelve is a motion to approve a full and Sunday liquor license for Young, Ji, Liu of Blue Crab Juicy Seafood located at thirty-two forty-eight Le Cleed Station Road.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I just had a question. They had everything checked, but is the ones that were circled just the ones that they're asking for? Like, they're just asking for.
Correct. Yes.
Right, okay, okay.
We're asking for a full liquor license and a Sunday liquor.
Right, and that's it. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Item number thirteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, condemning and denouncing acts of racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion here?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Phillips for bringing this to us and for her work and for Mr. Trapsler's work on putting it together.
Yes, thank you, Anthony, for your help with this.
And? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-one twelve is approved.
Item, item number fourteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, calling for a special election to fill the vacancy for Ward Two created by the resignation of council member Eleanor Pardini.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion here? We have sixty days with which to fulfill the obligation, is that correct? And there's no scheduled county votes, so.
Well, Jackie, we did some research on it. Jackie, if you want to expand on that, the charter says sixty, but it's not, it's not possible if you look at other requirements, so. We, the, the next date that we can make it and still meet all the other state statutory requirements would be August third, and so that's why we're having an August third. The charter language is, was clearly written prior to state law changes, so I went through this with Jackie. We double-checked, we counted back on the calendars and right now, today, we've actually even put something on our website, letting people know that it'll be available. Theoretically, this obviously had to pass first, but considering today is the date to at least make that announcement, we did so today, so we are meeting all the state statutory requirements and that'll, that election will be August third. The nominating petitions are going to be accepted today, really tomorrow, because obviously city hall's not open through May eighteenth. Thank you for your help with that, Jackie. She double-checked everything and did some good research. Appreciate that.
Are there any other questions regarding the process here? In that case, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fockingham. Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one thirteen is approved.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to accept the low bid of Spencer Contracting in the amount of one million fifty thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars for street construction with contingency of seven percent or seventy-three thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars for a total of one million one hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Anthony, our experience with Spencer, how much work have they done for the city?
They've done streets projects on three separate occasions, most recently last year. There were obviously a lot of different requirements with the pandemic and, and I mean, they just did a fantastic job. Average year, I might get, you know, ten to fifteen complaints. I would say last year I might have gotten two or three and they were all addressed by Spencer. I was, actually, every single firm that bid on this list, all five firms have done work and have all done exceptional work for Maplewood and these, these bids came in about a hundred, about a hundred and ninety thousand below what our expectations were. So every bid was good and every company was good, but I, I was very pleased with Spencer last year. It was, in the fourteen years I've been doing this, it was the fewest complaints I've had ever.
Good. Typically, the only complaints are from the fact that the utility companies come in right afterwards and tear up their work, so.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that both the city and the contractor will do their best to coordinate those utility modifications prior to the street work, so.
We do. It makes us look competent whenever we construct a brand-new road and a month later it's torn up, but again, we're kind of a, we, we alert the utility companies, we implore them to make the changes beforehand, we work around their schedule to do so. Unfortunately, a lot of times it's not always done prior to some work, or in some cases the work may cause some problems. That is also another, that can also happen sometimes there, when you're, you're, you know, you're tearing up the soil and things, sometimes maybe a water line that may be secure right now can get bumped or tweaked and so that, that does also cause some problems, but we definitely alert all utilities.
Okay. Are there other questions with regards to the street contracting? In that case, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one fourteen is approved.
Thank you. Item number sixteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to renew the city's dental insurance coverage for city employees with Delta Dental Plan of Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Questions are, have the rates gone up since last time?
Actually, the rates are going down for the first time in many years. They're going down, there's going to be a ten percent decrease this year in, in dental. The overall health insurance rates are going to, we, we were hoping for four percent, they're going to be four and a half percent, but we're worried about Delta Dental and it's going down ten percent this year.
Okay. Other questions from council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one fifteen is approved.
Item number seventeen is Bill sixty-one sixty-three in ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter thirty-four offenses.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I, just a quick comment again, thanking the council for their support on this and thanking Ms. Graves for her really diligent research, so thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it to us and for all your hard work, too.
Okay, this is a final reading, so we need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-nine fifty-eight is approved.
Thank you. Item number eighteen is old business. Who would like to begin that discussion?
Um, well, I will admit in full honesty with you all, I have not read the final edits on the equity RFP that's been sent to us, and so I'm wondering if we want to set a due date for when we want to review those and check back in about it, if that'd be okay.
I was hoping we could have until at least Sunday, if that's possible.
It's entirely up, it's entirely up to the council, whatever time you need. I think we could probably even do it via email because the changes are so minor from everything that's been sent out. I've basically just tried to consolidate or incorporate everyone's comments and I, I think I just have one outstanding issue, so if everyone wants to take a look at that, whatever time the council needs. If you just want to set a time, I'll, I'll make sure. I could even send a follow-up email next month, or next Monday, if you'd like, and say, hey, I'm getting ready to advertise this and move forward. Speak now or forever, hold your peace.
Well, easier for you if we just say by end-of-day Sunday and then if you don't hear, then you can just, does that work for everyone? I think that's, then you don't have to worry about another email.
No problem.
All my questions have been addressed. I was able to go through it and I went through Jenny's comments and so I'm fine with it as far as, you know, that goes, so just, you know, that I won't be responding because I, I don't have anything else. As far as Eleanor's comment, it doesn't matter either way to me, you know, whether you put something in there that she suggested or not, if you think it's necessary, but, you know, I'm just making that comment so that everybody can look at that as well and see what they think.
Because Eleanor had so many comments, I included her on that, that most recent email. I can even follow up with a phone call to her later this week just to make sure and if she does want something different, I can just send out one final, final version, but I just kept her comment and exactly as she had, she had left it from her prior edits. So I will do that and then if I don't hear anything else on Sunday, on Monday, we will get this RFP out, we'll put it on our website and we'll send something out via social media. I've also got a lot of contacts from Eleanor and we're also getting some other ones just from Googling what other cities have done and using those contacts as well.
Sounds great, thank you.
Is there any other discussion with regards to equity issues? Okay. I'll move on to item number nineteen, which is council communication. Are there any council communications?
I have two quick items. One, I think actually could have been an announcement, but on Sunday, April eighteenth, a group of us are getting together to do honeysuckle removal at Lindbergh Park. Turns out this is an invasive plant. I've learned a lot about this recently and so I'll be participating, we'll be meeting at Lindbergh Park at nine AM and I'll drop the email address that you can RSVP to in the chat and if folks are interested in joining us, I've also shared this flyer for the event on my Facebook page. I am additionally, just for everyone, all the constituents who are listening, council is organizing to try to distribute some flyers on the county's emergency rental assistance that they have available. They've got a little under thirty million dollars for county renters who are struggling to pay rent and so we're working on how to distribute that information to people's homes in case they don't see any of the media attention or social media posts. So those are my only two things.
Sarah, I do have a question about that. I don't know if you'll have the answer or not, but I do know somebody that was recently evicted, they just moved out of their apartment. Is it too late for them? I mean, once they're out, I guess it's not going to help them, huh?
I'm not sure exactly. I'm, I've been meaning to call, honestly, the hot, the number that they have posted for the hotline and ask some questions. I'm, so calling that number might not be bad. I also know that the county council is discussing tonight what a moratorium on invictions would be like for St. Louis County, since that's been lifted, which I personally agree with the moratorium at this, on invictions. And so I'll be curious to see how that shakes out, but if, Karen, if you're still in contact with that person, I would just give them the phone number and see if there's anything they can still do.
I did give them the phone number and told them to check it out. That was just today, though, so I wondered if you had any, you know, additional information, so I, they can call and find out. Okay, thank you.
Other council communication?
I had just two things, too. One was to follow up, Anthony, with you. I think our ordinances online were updated last April, so is that, do we anticipate an update soon?
There is actually one that is going on as we speak. I.
Okay.
Put, put a bunch of them on city clerk Karen Scheid's chair. In fact, the old charter updates did not make that and so that's what necessitated that, so we're going to do those old charter updates from, I believe it was sixteen, two thousand sixteen, and we're going to do everything from the last one, which was roughly a year ago. And I have a list of, you know, future items for the permanent city manager and that's one that I've said, make sure you do, do these on an annual basis.
Awesome, thank you. Something I'd also asked about, but I don't, I don't think you were at the meeting, was in between those, if it's possible to put up the ordinances we pass so that they are accessible to the public, and I think this will be especially helpful to us when we're updating ordinances, so we know we have the most recent versions. So I didn't know if there's, like, you can put like a link to the, or like with the PDFs of.
I'm going to be, I'll be honest with you, we could just, I mean, there's no reason we can't update them even more often if you'd like. It might, it doesn't cost anymore, it's, we pay by page. No, and so why we wait, waited, wait so long or why some cities wait so long, I don't know. We can, we can do that monthly or it's not hard.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great if it's not burdensome or costly because that way, because that's where people go, I mean, that's where I go to look for the ordinances, so that way everyone's looking at what is most recent.
We can just do it on a monthly basis, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll make sure Karen, Karen's on, on this, so we'll make sure, I'll talk to her tomorrow to make sure we get that set up and then that way, you know, maybe something's a couple of weeks out, but I mean, it's pretty darn accurate and again, we pay by the page, so it's not going to cost us any more money.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Thank you, Karen. Um, the second thing was, I know we've talked, like, not, like offline a little, there's, like, we're going to bring the traffic study concept back onto the table, but I know we need to wait until school's in session, which I'm, I assuming we're probably going to wait till the fall when school's sort of like normal again, that, that may make sense.
I believe we should.
Yeah.
Just because of the fact that the, the two most contentious, the highest volume of complaints are near the Early Childhood Center and I believe council member Phillips and council member Wood are, would, will attest to that and honestly, there are issues there and also near the high school, Oakland, Gerhard, but really the ECC is much, much higher, but I would, I, I don't think you're going to get an accurate information and I did speak with a traffic engineer that's done work in the past, just to verify to say, hey, do you think it makes sense to at least start now? And they said, not, not if you want the best numbers. And I've had people call in the past, I have a separate folder that I, that anyone that's called for any complaint over the last probably four or five years and, and I've had, talked to several people and I've explained the school situation to them and, and everyone seems pretty understanding as to what, why we're waiting on it.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I thought it'd be good to sort of like throw that back out to the public again, too, so they know we didn't forget, but we also want it to be the best. Awesome, thank you.
I can talk with Laura Miller, we can get a blast out and just indicate, let everybody know what we're, we're planning on doing it next year and let them know we did not forget and, and it will be in next year's budget, the one we'll be reviewing next week as well. We're just basically pushing it back a year.
And maybe it would be helpful, too, if like, you know, people, like, I, sort of what, this is, I saw a resident had posted online about, you know, there's an intersection stop signs that people run a lot and so maybe it gives people a chance, too, to like get those issues in to by then or, you know, before that time so that we can have that all together when, when it's time to do it.
There are some areas in town that I was very, very surprised, I believe I was talking with council member Crossley about it, some of the speed numbers on Bellevue.
Yeah.
It, I was shocked at, 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 at the speed that people get. Again, everyone says, oh, they're going fifty miles an hour down my road and then you get the, the traffic counts and it's more, you know, it's fast, but it's usually not fifty, but that area really surprised me. So I have, I have a lot of areas saved to make sure every comment I've received over the last four or five years is at least evaluated by our, whoever we end up hiring.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, that we, it, it wasn't necessarily a comment in the town hall meeting notes, but maybe incorporating something about the, where we are in that traffic study into the, because I know there were a few various questions about traffic and pedestrian crossings and things like that, so maybe that's another place where we could update, get some more So maybe that's another place where we could update, get some more current information out when we get that posted.
We can do that.
Yeah, that's a really good point because that, that was the booth I was in at the town hall. And I didn't, you know, everybody was writing, but it was repetition, you know, we didn't, there was lots of that on the board that we, you know, that people, you wouldn't know. So that's a real good point, Sandy.
And if everyone remembers, a while back, we had done a, like a, a study sheet. I think Marty had sent, I, I think he had sent it out, put it together, mirrored some other cities. Once we get the city manager in and maybe even before that, we can look at that as well. Because I think we, we, we had spent some time since we've looked it over, but it's a, it's a criteria for speed bumps. We're gonna, we would, we could possibly change those around a little bit. But it's much more detailed than our, our prior sheet. I think it's probably, you know, three or four pages of documentation. And I, I, I assumed you'd looked at it all, but I wasn't sure. So I have a note to make sure to get that back out to the council. Obviously, you've got a lot of other, a lot of other projects you're working on right now. But as we start checking these off the list, I'll bring that back up in the near future.
Other council communication? Okay, mayor's report.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I don't know, there was a question in the chat. I don't know if anyone can answer it. I didn't want it to go on, but it asked how much money may be received from the Initial Cares Act?
The initial was five hundred and, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, I believe. It's either five fifty-three or five fifty-six. It's right around there, a little over a half a million dollars.
What do we use that for, the initial?
Uh, just, just on personnel cost alone, it was basically eaten up. I mean, the amount of overtime we had to pay just in the fire department alone. The police department, the fire department, both of those were hit hard. I, I, we've used it for Plexiglas wipes, masks, everything related to coronavirus. Moving the desks around, we used it for that to help pay off that. I mean, the number of, our, our, our overall request was much higher than that amount of money, Sean. So we submitted a much higher request to get that reimbursement, which was much less. But I can assure you, we, we, we used it all.
Anthony, I'm sorry. I remember talking about this when it first came up. Anthony and the county had set like pretty strict uses for the dollars under both like the COVID relief fund, federal guidance, and then the county's municipal relief fund guidance. And then that, the number we were allotted was just determined per capita. Yeah.
And do, do we know how much we're getting from the second one yet?
I don't have that exact number in front of me. I thought it was right around one point four, one point four million. But please don't quote me on that. I can get, I can get the, go through the old paperwork. I've kind of gone through it. It sounds terrible, but I want to see it first before I start counting it, so.
Yeah, and, and to answer Megan's question, we really don't, we haven't decided what we're gonna do with that. I would imagine we're just putting it in our general fund to compensate for some of our costs for all this other kind of stuff. But.
That would be my recommendation. Really, when you start talking about, you know, having to pay overtime. And, and there was even a time within our fire department, we had very few healthy bodies. Same thing within the police department. We had every detective. We had our environmental officer out on the street as well. They got, there was a, a period of time, if, if people recall, I would say it was, I would probably say it was probably sometime in January, maybe late December, we closed city hall for about four or five days there, just because it was, I was concerned where the spread was going. And fortunately, it, it didn't go from our fire and police department to the rest of the employees. But I just wanted to make sure, when, when the numbers did get high, that we acted responsibly and closed down briefly. And, and I made a lot of calls to employees just to make sure everyone was feeling fine. Once I realized that, that, that spread didn't trickle to the administration and public works areas and basically all the admin, then we reopened. But we got hit really hard with overtime costs. Like a lot of other cities, we were, we were not necessarily unique in that case.
Other council communication?
No, I am done for sure now. Thank you.
Mayor's report, I just want to remind council that in the ordinance review, you'll need someone to address building historic preservation and advertising. And that's my entire report. City attorney's report?
Nothing to report, mayor.
City managers' report?
Nothing aside from my memo. Start at the bottom, the easy one, the tennis courts. Actually, the surface was, they were applying the surface Monday and today, so the good news is that should be coming soon. We were just waiting for essentially that concrete to fully cure and wait for some dry time. We've got that, so that's good news. And then the concert and the park banner, I know there was, there was, you know, in the minutes, and we talked briefly about it, but I didn't want to produce a banner and then have everyone say, why didn't it, why didn't you have it read this way? And so instead of just saying mayor and council, I, I don't know if we want to, it's really up to the council. But, you know, I just threw a couple of suggestions. Have a question for the mayor and council, you know, banner or city of Maplewood, mayor and council questions here or something. But before I actually fabricate or produce the banner, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
So, go ahead, Sandy. Sorry.
Sorry. I, I'm thinking keep it as generic as possible, so you can use it for multiple events.
Okay.
Yeah. I think just more, you know, city of Maplewood, city of Maplewood information, something like that.
Yeah, I like that because if you say questions, they might think it's only about questions or something. I mean, they might just want to make comments or, you know, so I think that would be good, too, just to keep it.
I heard city of Maplewood and city of Maplewood information. And then we'll put like our logo, I'm assuming?
Logo would be nice.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want the word information in there or no?
Well, I should be. Right? I mean, should we signify that it's elected officials and, and not administrative part of the city?
Yeah, that's true. You'd almost have to have mayor and council.
You know, I don't know if I would, would put city of Maplewood information because I don't know nearly much as Anthony does about our inner workings and, you know, we'll get those questions.
Well, my next suggestion was Maplewood mayor and city council table.
Well, maybe can we, can we do it where it's just like city of Maplewood? Have like little interchangeable, like you could put mayor and council like that you Velcro to it or, you know what I mean? So that you could use it for multiple.
I imagine it's something you guys will use five times a year. I don't, I don't have a problem. These banners, honestly, they can produce them relatively reasonable. And we need to make another one. I, I appreciate the thought of trying to save some money. But I think, I think if I just saw, if I'm a resident and I just saw city of Maplewood, I might not know what that was. I'm just being honest. Even if we advertise it, some people don't pay attention. I like the idea of Maplewood mayor and city council table. And then maybe, you know, a, a logo, but again, it's entirely your guys, up to your, up to you. I'm just trying to think of what a resident, what, what might make a resident think, okay, I'm gonna go, oh, I do have a question about, I'm sure complaining about the public works director, right? I'm gonna go where, or my, my road or speeding. We talked about speeding earlier. I'm gonna go over there and talk to whoever's at that table.
In the past, the dunking booth has been very effective in drawing.
I believe council member Fockingham volunteered for the first booth that that grew.
He's gonna come to every single one.
You're gonna need a lot of water.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair point that both of you are making that I didn't, hadn't considered. So, I mean, I'm fine if it just says mayor and city council.
Maplewood mayor and city.
Yeah, but yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, however you want to word that, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any other items on the city managers' report?
Oh, I have one question about the concert now. Do you anticipate we'll be wearing masks for this event? Or are we, you know, I know we're supposed to still be wearing them even after we're vaccinated and other people are too. So what are your thoughts?
I, I believe that they'll require that. We'll make sure we just follow whatever the county department health requirements are, which right now they are. You would want to wear masks.
Yeah, right now they are, and I anticipate they might still be. But then we would need a little sign about please wear mask or something.
May not be a bad idea to have some paper masks there because I know everyone has been there before where they, they've foolishly walked in someplace and forgot they had their mask on. I mean, I know I've done it. So, or they go, they show up at an event and realize I didn't bring mine. Did you bring them? No. And it'd be nice to have those out there for people, maybe even have some sanitizer there, because if they're eating. We can put stuff like that out at the table. We can have new resident guides. We can put whatever you want, maybe even copies of the maple leaf in case someone didn't get it. Then we can use this table kind of a multi-purpose. So I, I think council member Schmidt came up with the idea. I really like it. I, I really do. I think it's a great idea.
I won't take, it was council member Phillips.
Oh, was it? I apologize, Sandy.
I mean, we all agree, but I'm gonna give.
I'm sorry, Sandy. I, I believe you. And by the way, you gave me way too much credit for the prior resolution. That was, I basically took what you wrote, just so you know. Sorry. All right, I've got my direction, Maplewood mayor and city council members. And then we'll have a logo there as well. And this thing can evolve however we see fit. I think it'll be a good thing. We'll get a nice table or two up there, whatever we need. Just beforehand, let me know how many seats we need. I think it's a great idea.
It'd be fun.
Yep.
Any other questions for me? Okay, and we'll see everyone next week at six PM for capital improvements and Parks and Stormwater Capital at six PM work session.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Item number twenty-three is the second of two public forums. Is there anyone with a raised hand?
I do not see a raised hand.
Okay. Item number twenty-four is a motion to hold a closed session to discuss a real estate matter.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
It's eight thirteen now. Do we want to meet in five minutes? Is that fine? I'll start it in five minutes. We'll see everyone in five minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, and the, we'll need a motion to adjourn after that. Okay, all right.
Do we need that motion now?
Yeah, I mean, let's just go ahead and adjourn the meeting now due to the Zoom, but that's okay.
Okay, sure. Motion adjourned.
They know that, that motion needs to come after the closed session.
Yeah, it always did before, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we're not gonna go back into live session. Does that matter?
Um, no, well, we, we can, we can close it. That's fine.
So.
Close it now or later?
Well, here's the thing, you can, if you, technically, we should close out, go into the closed session and then make the motion there and then come into this session and close it here.
I know.
That's technically, if you would like to do it that way. But in either event, the motion to adjourn should come after the closed session, whether it's in this room or in the other room that you're going to go to.
Okay, we'll do it that way then.
Okay.
So. Eight nineteen now?
Uh, yeah, we'll do it at, we'll do it at eight twenty.
Okay.
See everyone then. Thank you.
Thank you.